Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Visitor comments? Anything that's not on the agenda? Good, we're good? Okay. Discussion and vote on a special election. And actually, I want to just take a couple of minutes here. Or a couple of seconds, not minutes, I'm sorry. It's Monday, oh man. Bill, Bill Tinker is with us. He's via Zoom right now because he is out in Boston. The next couple of days, he's going to be doing the citizens legislative seminar at the State House. So I just kind of wanted to acknowledge that for Bill because I think that's pretty cool. And yeah, he's out there representing Hardwick. So I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, now, discussion and vote on a special election. So we had our special town meeting and the article passed for the fire truck. And now we need to go to a ballot vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we're going to talk about maybe some times and when we think this is good to do.
My only question is, did you get confirmation from Josh as to when the deadline is?
He had said to me it has to be committed by the end of January.
Okay.
Yeah. So I know there was some talk about, you know, waiting until the spring, but then we're not guaranteed that we can still get that truck for those funds.
Once we have a ballot, once that happens, what else has to happen before we give them the okay? Is there any other stuff?
Funding it, going, you know?
Then the treasurer collector and the town accountant will be working with our with our financial advisor and pulling everything together.
So in any maybe a couple of weeks.
That's a good point, probably. So I know when I was speaking with the town clerk, he had suggested a Saturday would be would be best. And I don't want to speak for you, if you want to go.
Yeah, I mean, just like we did with the horse racing and where our town election is now, you know, I think Saturday, just we don't have to worry about the school.
The school, right.
And I think there's more people, it just affords more people the opportunity.
To come up.
To come up. I'll leave the hours up to you guys, however you think. I honestly don't think you should, it's the winter time, I don't think you should go past six o'clock. If you want to go 12 to six, can't open any later than noon, 12 to six, 10 to six. I mean, I'll leave that in your court. I think similar to like the racetrack, we'll probably have a bunch of people all at once and then nothing. So we have to have it open for a minimum of four hours.
Okay.
So minimum of four hours, can't open later than noon. Those are the criteria.
10 to six is perfect.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Also, I mean, you can certainly discuss it tonight, but when you vote to hold it, you need to, you know, she has the language, you need to specify specifically what the question is.
Yeah, I, we have it right here.
And I need that in writing. So I actually, I don't need like an email or, you know, I need that in writing that the board, the select board is calling a special election on this date. Please place the following question on the ballot. Boom.
Okay. And funding this, because this will be obviously.
So I've got, so I encumbered 2,000 because I was concerned about ramp and ability to get into the building. The workaround I've got now is I'm going to be doing cameras at each entrance. The Secretary of State has told me that the doors are supposed to be unlocked. So when the kids are there, I, you know, they're not going to be there on Tuesday for Election Day, but the students will be. The concern I have is the confusion. Go in the cafeteria one time, go in the gymnasium the next time. The point of all this roundabout is the fact that I don't need the entire 2,000, I only use a few hundred. So I'll know by the end of that election what I will need for May, presuming that I don't need anything else. I'll know what I'll have left over and whether or not we'd have to do a reserve fund. Right now, it's probably, if I had to guess, I'd say maybe a grand that I might have to request, but I'll know more.
Okay.
Once this election is over.
Not horrible.
We've got it, we've got it.
Yeah.
I have it now. The question will be how much is left over for May.
For the town elections.
And the same thing with May, you know, depending upon races and things like that, you know, that would dictate that. And the number of what, the coding for that machine and the, and the tabulator is dictated or predicated upon how many races there are. So just ballpark for this, it's going to be between two and three thousand.
So do we have any dates that we were considering?
Is there mail in voting for this?
So there certainly could be unless there's a public hearing held within 45 days of whatever the date is in which they decide to opt out of it. We won't, or I wouldn't recommend mailing them to everybody. The application would certainly be on the website. And if somebody did want to do so, they could certainly submit it to me. I don't think it'll be anything like this here. So I, I, I wouldn't say let's opt out. I would just say let it be an option.
Request.
I don't think it will be.
If they want the request.
Yeah, it's not going to be a huge burden to me to meet that.
Okay.
You were pretty comfortable with January. That was kind of the timeframe you were thinking of.
Well, here in January 31, I think the thing, I'm interpreting commitment meaning the town meaning vote and the people that voted yes. And then it's the logistics of getting the money to.
Funding, right, right, right.
Funding it. The thing is, is you have those two parts of it. I, I don't want to speak for the vendor, I would think it'd be like, oh, okay.
So should we set an early January date and then confirm with the vendor that that's what they need to secure it? Even if funding takes a couple of extra weeks?
I'm looking at like January 11th, which is a Saturday.
And that means voter registration on January 1st, which is a holiday. I got 10, I need to have 10 days, so.
What about the 18th?
I would, yeah, I would prefer the 18th or the 21st, just to stay away from the holidays.
And that gives us enough time, you think, we don't know, we need have to do after.
Well, here's the thing, right now, you still have plenty of time. I need 35 days. So you can do all this now. You could still vote on this in two weeks' time and you have plenty of time. I would prefer that you don't commit a date and a time tonight until you get those questions.
Confirmation from the vendor.
Yeah. But you still, you still have time to call it.
So why don't we, yeah, if we still have time, why don't we tentatively say the 18th and get some confirmation from the vendor?
Yeah.
I'm comfortable with that. Bill?
I'm fine with that.
You just gotta, you just gotta holler and hoot if you want to speak up. I don't want, you're not sitting here, so I just don't want to forget about you.
It's okay, I'm listening.
And I'll, I'll reach out to the school and confirm, it will be available. If there were something, they would push it off, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
But yeah, I would just wait on that.
Shoot for that date and then if something needs to change, then we can, you know, pivot from there. We good? Okay. So then we won't vote tonight, we'll wait to vote at our next meeting.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want the surprise you want, that's all.
A welcome happy surprise.
Okay, next up, affordable cars, potential name change?
Yes.
Okay.
We have Gillespie Car Care on property.
Correct.
We'd like to change affordable to Gillespie Car Care.
Okay, why the name change?
Gillespie Car Care has been my family business since 65. And my son recently passed away and my other kids want to keep the name that we originally had.
Which is the?
Gillespie Car Care.
So you'd go from affordable cars?
To Gillespie Car Care. And the reason we're asking now is because the registry renewal is now. And if I pay for affordable, I got to pay for a whole year for my workman's comp and everything else through the next year because they're not going to renew it, like reimburse me if I change the name in January.
So you're requesting it go to, say the whole name again?
Gillespie Car Care One.
Care.
Care. What was the last word?
This is one, second number.
Okay. Care, one.
Nothing would change on the property, the signs are just already up from Gillespie Car Care, they're there.
Okay.
So the only thing different is affordable, the sign would come down.
Okay. And I know, I know there were some concerns last year about.
It was cleaned up.
Car, okay, yeah, yeah.
I promised I cleaned it up and it's made up.
Okay. I know Paul's here. She's our building inspector now. So I just, if he wants to add to that.
The, I counted the vehicles today. The only thing that my past experience with licensing, board sets this number of vehicles they can have in the business. I don't know if this ever been done on this location.
It was last year.
Yeah.
So I don't know, I don't have that number, so I can't say, I can't tell the board right now if ZE complants.
I believe it was 10.
Was it 10? I counted 21 cars in that vicinity today.
How many?
I counted 21 vehicles, one has, looked like it had plates.
Nothing else had plates, only one had plates?
Only one had a plate. Can't tell you if it was valid or not because it was in front of the car.
Yeah.
So you don't see the sticker.
Right.
That's how many vehicles that I observed in the vicinity of the building, both sides and whatnot.
I believe we, we came to 10 last year.
I also believe, yeah. Bill, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Nope.
Can I?
I'm not, yep.
Okay.
We have two businesses on the property, the 21 cars.
Okay.
Unfortunately, they're customer cars. Ryan owns two of them, she owns three of them. They're all customer vehicles, none of them are for sale. So everything to the left, if you look, I don't know where you went up there, but if you look to the left, where that one truck is.
I saw first vehicle.
Right. You know where the front truck is and the whole intersection is?
And I saw the vehicles to the left of the barn.
Correct. What, the top part where the one truck is?
Yeah.
That's where our display section is for the cars. We're only allowed 10 cars for sale. And there's only one truck up there right now.
Okay, so the rest are being worked on?
Yes.
Okay. So you'll change your name through the registry?
Yes.
Or you already have Gillespie Car Care?
Gillespie Car Care is already in the registry?
Right.
We're just going to transfer the address from where to that new address.
Oh, okay. So you're, you're currently operating in where?
I had a license in where at one time?
Okay.
And I never lost it, I was still in.
You just came over here under affordable.
Correct.
Okay. Hard to keep track of it all.
We wonder that ourselves.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
I just have a question, just because we are working on all of our licenses and renewals, everything this week, and everything's going out on Wednesday.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess my question was, we're literally mailing everything out on Wednesday. So I guess why I couldn't wait till Wednesday, I guess is my question? Because you'll be getting your packet and everything and there's a procedure on how to change, you know, information that's wrong, like if the manager changes or the name changes.
So would they just do that on their renewal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was asked how to do it and he told me to go on to the board to do it, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think the procedure at the time was unknown.
Okay. So if there's a means to do that on their renewal, okay, then that, then let's handle it that way.
Okay.
Is that okay with you?
Best part is there's no, I just don't know, please. I asked you months ago.
I mean, that makes sense to me if that, you know, that, because my next question was, well, how do we do that?
Yeah.
So if it's, if you're going to get your renewal, which now you're going to go to the registry and do it there too, so it will all kind of be done at the same time.
But isn't the renewal in affordable, our name?
So that's where, on the, on the front page you'll see, I'm sorry, the second page you'll see, there's a place where if anything changed, you would just have to change it right there and there's a comment section.
Okay.
So if the name change or anything, that's where you do it.
Okay. I've heard of things changing, I never heard of the company name changing on that form.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you have any questions when you're doing it, like, please call me or come by and I'll help you through.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So then we should be all set. Okay. Great. Perfect. All right. Discussion on elected and appointed board communications.
So I had some questions regarding this.
Okay.
As far as, if other boards, like say the planning board, somebody comes before the planning board and wants to build something and there should be impact studies and stuff like that, that the planning board would, you know, deem they have to do it or not? And I'm just wondering, this communication, if there were studies and stuff of impacts to the town, how come that hasn't been forwarded to the select board? Or set up a communication where if something comes before the planning board that will impact the town, that they bring it to the select board? So the select board is aware of it.
Well, can I?
Sure.
It normally goes, if it's a site assignment, a site, site plan review, permits, things like that, they'll go to, they get copied to the conservation commission or the board of health or, you know, anything that the planning board feels it should go to. But they can, I'm sure they wouldn't mind sending to the select board too. It's a question of what, what you think an impact would be.
An example would be like Eagle Hill and all the housing they're developing right now. And I'm not sure exactly what the housing is, but if it's for staff and if those staff have families and those kids are going to attend our public school, there's an impact.
But that didn't, that wouldn't come before the planning board?
What, housing wouldn't come before the planning board?
Not at the school, I don't believe.
No building permit? It would just, it would be zoning and a building permit.
They're exempt from zoning is the way I always understood. They didn't come in and ask to do it.
So, well, my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong here, but they're not exempt. They, they do have the Dover amendment where they're allowed to build, but certain things under 121 Master of Law where it's redeveloped, and that would be redevelopment of land because it's agricultural 60, that would be, there would be impacts to the town and they need to bring that forward.
Madam Chair, do you think we should check for that building inspector?
No matter what they have, they have to apply for a permit to build something anyway.
Right.
If the bylaw says it's got to go to the planning board for site plan review, that's where it goes. Not necessarily anything to special permit because of the Dover amendments ramifications, but it should be reviewed by site plan.
Well, that's, it's a good idea. It's not, hasn't been, sorry. That whole sports complex went up, I don't think there was much here in municipal office building. We just go ahead and do it.
But they still pull permits for that stuff?
Well, and the, you know, all the water and things like that.
Right, yeah.
Sewer, yeah.
I mean.
In the commercial and mound chairs.
Yep.
Both fire department and myself, that type of uses, you know, we have to look at fire department access.
Right.
Beating. Yes, they have to demonstrate what the fire protection requirements are going to be.
So they come before the town in some capacity?
Correct.
They're not just up there building, you know, to build. So I, so.
And I don't mean to single out Eagle Hill here.
No, no, just.
Just as an example.
Yeah.
But it could be any nonprofit coming to town, acquire land, and then if they, for Eric, they're tax exempt and zoning exempt, they can build whatever they want.
Yeah.
I imagine.
And I, me personally, I mean, I, I really believe that, you know, an impact through the planning board, an impact study or something that says, hey, this is going to impact the town this way, you're going to need increased police or you're going to need increased fire, you're going to need ambulance, something along those lines. And that, that should come before the select board or the select board should be at least made aware of this.
Yeah, I think you're, go ahead, Justine.
I just got informed via Eric Fleming that Eagle Hill Gym went through site plan review.
So it is, the planning board is the gate.
Yeah.
And did the planning board pass that on to the select board when they did the gym?
I think so. It wasn't a selectman when they did the gym.
So I wasn't either, so.
I guess like every board and committee, you know, they have their specific charge, but how, what's the best way for each board and committee to communicate with each other?
Yeah.
So there's no surprises, like when something does come to select board, it's not a surprise that's been all these other places. So it's like, how can you make sure that, you know, this board and other boards, you know, proper communication?
Should go to you.
If you wanted to. I mean, I, I get a lot, like, I mean, a lot of stuff does, you know, come through my email.
And I, I get where you're coming from, Bill. I just, I don't, as a board, I don't want us to be micromanaging other commissions, boards and committees. It's not.
No, I'm only talking about costs and services.
When it comes to.
That will impact the town and citizens.
Like impacts. I mean, I guess we could put out.
I mean, this should be in the planning board's real hopes. They should, you know, they should have these studies and realize what is, what is the impact to the town and pass it on or at least pass the communication along to the select board.
I agree.
Bill, not you, Bill, sorry. No, Bill's in here, sorry.
All right.
Yeah, I don't know how useful it is, but you know, we've wrestled with this and we've talked to other boards like planning, just about resurrecting some kind of tracking sheet.
Checklist, yeah, right.
You know, and some of you dealt with it years ago and then, you know, it kind of faded out, I guess.
Just for communicating, just for the purpose of.
Yeah, the people would have to go to each board and get a signature or get it signed off that they went to that board. So each board knows kind of like what's going on.
Even if the board doesn't have, want to have anything to do with it.
It's just at least we know, at least you know, or, you know, yeah.
Yeah, that they've been sent to each board just to check in.
And that could come to you and that would save a lot of time.
I don't know. We had a few examples, but we never got that far.
Well, we had a joint meeting, you were here, like, two years or three years, I don't know, it was before or after.
And we've done it several times.
No, it was, yeah, we, well, we did discuss that because it does make a difference because sometimes someone goes to go build a house and we're in Wattlin and so, well, I didn't know where you got, I didn't have to do that. You have this checklist and you.
All the boards and commissions.
But you need to go to.
Right.
But then everyone, and then it goes to the select board, so they do know. But we did meet.
We had a few examples and then we never really condensed them or settled on anything, you know.
Can we look at that? Can we?
Yeah.
Kind of like a special event forum?
Yeah, another special event forum.
Yeah, kind of, well, but it's not a special.
Bring it in, if you could send it to us, we could all look at it and boil it down.
We did, but then things, other.
I remember seeing something, like, I remember seeing, we, we did have some meetings
in this room, but then there were other big issues.
Paul had something years ago.
Yeah, and I think even, even, I thought Lucinda at one point dug some old form out for us to consider and add to the pile, you know. We had three or four examples, but.
I have in a folder, I have some.
Could you get that over to Justine and then we, well, we can work on.
Because we want input from all the boards.
Tweaking it, right.
And the building inspector.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and what would work for everyone.
Yeah, that's, you know, then just disperse it so that everyone has, just like the special events forum, provide feedback. Paul, did you have something?
I would further elaborate following, so a lot of towns go, go this route, certain Most important one that I've seen, you know, when you go to the board of health, what are they going to do about trash? Oh, we ain't into the water. You know what I mean? So this, it opens the door to ask questions. Okay? I don't know if Hardwick has done this, but some communities have adopted the state law that says that you have, if they're in lieu of, if you're behind in taxes, you're not entitled to a permit. So some communities have adopted that in their town, in their town. So some communities have grown up, part of the process is to go see the collective treasure to sign up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, as uniquely as it is, like our experience in Milbury, both myself and Justine, that was the process.
Yeah.
The, we had people that were admitted to the collective treasures, I don't get eight bucks on a sewer bill. You owe the money.
Yeah.
The law says you're not entitled to anything unless.
Unless you paid your bill, right.
Unless, like, we, we pointed out to the town managers, one of the things, the guy, the person's roof is leaking, we got to let them have, you know what I mean? That's a response, you know, it turns on a, one of those gray areas, but planned construction and they're behind in their taxes.
Right.
So it's something that end the step process. You know, like, we eventually went from the papers set up to the online permitting.
Yeah.
On the online permit, it just, everybody gets notified, you want a piece of the plate, that, but here you go.
So they have to kind of click and sign off on it.
Clicks go down. And when I see everybody all set up the online.
There you go.
I'm free to issue the permit.
I like that.
But that's some of the benefits.
I mean, I know, we're not, we're probably not going to get online permitting anytime soon, but we can move towards it.
Some of the benefits are up there.
Ryan?
Madam Chair, I was just going to say very similar. I mean, I remember, I think some of the other forms of the 61A, when people were taking them out, it would have to pass through, you know, before the select board would sign off on it. You'd have to run through conservation assessors, everybody else to see if, or parks and rights, see if there's any interest. When I do my DVAs, I copy the assessor, I copy the board of health, I copy the planning board, I copy the fire department, I copy the building inspector, I can copy you guys if you want. Because all that, that's right there, it's a notice, it's like, hey, I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing.
A visit, yeah.
I'm doing yogurt at this place. And so the board of health might be like, well, I don't have a permit or a license for this address here, and give them a call, so.
DVA.
Excuse me?
Doing business.
DV, doing, I'm sorry.
Doing business as.
Doing business as, Master of Law, Chapter 110, Section 5, and it's not, it's not, everybody calls it a license, it is a certificate, it is basically just a notification that someone is doing business under, something under than their own name.
Right.
And I have the contact information, that way if there's a complaint under Chapter 93 Consumer Protection, people can reach out. It's not a license, banks want it to, before they'll...
They'll set up an account if...
And the thing is, is I'm really not a judge on it, I'm the repository, I had this with the, with the, with the institution, it's like, you wanna file it, you can file it, I don't think you have to, but, you know, we'll take the 35 bucks for four years and move on.
Paul?
Just to say with Ryan, that's a common practice in most local governments, like, oh, the ones I was working for, the application we get from the clerk, and to verify that the assessors, the collective treasurer, make sure you're, you're on good standing, and then here we go to the building inspector for zoning purposes, you know, especially for a new one.
Yeah.
And then those signatures are on, yeah, further assist the town clerk says, oh, you met all the criteria for me to go for that.
But it might be, I could also too, just to pay back what you said, I can also put out my listserv, the manager's listserv, any small towns you don't have online permitting, you know, what checklist or what do you use?
Do you, yeah.
I could also put that out.
Then we can try to get a couple of different variations.
Examples. If Paul has an example or two from some of his other towns.
Well, the biggest thing, like in health conservation, the, the big, big thing is when a, somebody comes in and goes, hey, you got a clearance from that, if they, that they filed a notice of applicability, they take the time to speak with it. And they, if they have a form, like some of the towns uses a cardinalist three thing, and somebody's going out and checking, yeah, you're more than 100 feet, you're out of, and that paperwork goes to me, I don't have to bother with it, but it's in my files. That's a good tool, but, Board of Health, I mean, most common thing is, we're all pretty much in well, I, I, one of the things I know that they're working around, they're gonna do some new well regulations, and it helped clarify a lot of it. I know they're working on that, and my part of the building code basically says that I have to know what you're gonna do. You're gonna, it's gonna be water, you got the permit from the well, you gotta set the system design, yep. You allot the right size of zoning, yep. You pretty much are ready to go from the permit there, but it's a jigsaw puzzle for municipalities to locally get involved and set up the checks and balances.
No, I think it's...
Especially when we're, you know, you know, our subway office is a hard time.
Right, and so it's not always someone to, that you can just run down the hall and talk to, so if they had that checklist, it would alleviate a lot of waiting or delays or, so, Bill, what do you think about that?
I think anything we do is gonna be good.
Yeah, well, let's start.
It'll be an improvement.
Let's start with that and then we can maybe look, take a look at it together at our next meeting?
Yeah.
What you, like, what we can...
That would be good.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Ryan.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that's good. Discussion and possible vote on Hardwick New Braintree Cultural Council appointments?
So I just added this to the agenda, or, because the Hardwick New Braintree Cultural Council are reached out, they're looking for members, and I didn't know if anyone on the board, if anyone in mind, I'm gonna put it on the website, but I didn't know if there was anyone in mind that I could reach out to to see who may be interested in this.
I actually did talk to a couple of people, unfortunately.
That was worth it, ask.
So if any, if anyone's interested, oh, Liz Riley is interested. Can we make an appointment right now?
Oh, that'd be great.
And then get some work.
R.I.L.L.Y.?
No, it's R.E.I.L.L.Y., yeah. It's Elizabeth, this, yeah.
Fantastic.
Want to make a motion to appoint?
I move that we appoint Elizabeth Riley to the Executive Board.
Hardwick New Braintree.
Hardwick Cultural Council.
Yeah, motion and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Good.
Aye.
Aye.
You have to say your name, Bill, and say aye.
Okay.
Because you're on Zoom.
William Tinker, aye.
Thank you. Okay, discussion and possible votes on, thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the Barry Hardwick Council on Aging Executive Board.
So just like the Hardwick New Braintree Cultural Council, Barry COA reached out looking for Hardwick members on their executive board. I have been to one of their meetings so far, and we definitely need some more Hardwick representation, so again, I just wanted to put it out there to see if any, if you knew of anyone that would be interested, or anyone in this room.
Okay, well, it's out there, and we're gonna put it up on the site as well.
Yes.
Appointment for the Master Plan Steering Committee, April Grandinetti. So I see her letter in here, and I also see that the planning board is asking us, and the Master Steering Committee also recommended, Master Plan Steering Committee also recommended April Grandinetti to the committee.
I move that we appoint April Grandinetti to the Master Plan Steering Committee.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
William Tinker, aye.
Thank you. All right, wastewater treatment plant assistant chief operator appointment.
We have one. So we interviewed myself and the wastewater superintendent, we interviewed three candidates, one of them being an internal candidate. We did land on Dan Stoudli, we checked his references, and he is willing to start next Monday.
Excellent.
Everything checked out.
Excellent.
I think we should appoint him.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Chris Stoudli, Assistant Chief Operator.
I will second it.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
William Tinker, aye.
Okay, discussion and vote on remaining ARPA balance.
So I attached this spreadsheet that I received from the town accountant, if you see the balance, it is 52,000, but 40 of that, the board, a selectman, did vote to commit to the barn roof. So that would leave about $12,000 left in ARPA. I'm coming to you to request to use that, the rest of the remaining balance towards the Gilbertville hydrant system and the water leak that you've been dealing with for the last several months. It's, it's about, just in materials, it's been about $5,200 so far, so just to leave some room, if anything else comes up, I'm asking the board to let us use the rest of that money towards the Gilbertville water leak and hydrants.
We have to use that by December anyway, right?
December 31st, yes.
I'm okay with that, Bill?
Um, well, if we could use that money, or split some of that money in, to hire a grant writer for the town, I think that would be very helpful, I mean, I know we have the water hydrants and we have issues, but if we could apply some of it to a grant writer.
So there's only 12,000 left, I'm not sure we're getting a grant writer for...
Or you could probably get a grant writer for six grand. It was just talk, it was, it was consideration of possibly doing that, so.
So myself and Mr. Valheim applying for a grant, for a grant writer through the MVP program for FY '26, so I don't know if that's gonna go through or if that's gonna happen yet, but...
I talked to him today.
Okay.
So, and then he specified that it would be better to put in for a contract.
Yes.
Grant writer than, than an appointment position, but I'll be talking to him again on Wednesday, and we should talk to him before then.
We're working on it.
And that's way down the line.
Yeah.
It's applying for a grant to get a grant writer, it's gonna take a long time.
Lucinda?
At the capital planning meeting, we spoke, we made a list of things to be addressed, and there are pine trees behind this building that need to come down before they are blown down onto this building, so that's, that's an idea, it's gonna be expensive, but it might, you know.
So I did ask, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did ask our highway superintendent to get me a quote on how much that is gonna cost, so I'm waiting for him on that. So it's definitely on our radar, but I just don't think out of, it's gonna be, I just don't think it's gonna come from ARPA at this point, unless the board would like to reallocate those, my request.
Yeah, I, I mean, I do know the fire hydrants and the water source has been a concern.
I need to have an executive session about that, or I can start talking about it now, but I think we might get in trouble.
Okay.
I tried to have one tonight, but it didn't work out.
No, uh, right, we can, yeah. Maybe Justine can explain that after. I, I, I'm happy to take a vote and see where it lands, I, I know that the hydrants have been a big concern. I know we've repaired some with early funds, but, Eric, go ahead.
Could we, do we know where we would go to look for a short-term grant writer? I mean, if you could get, if we could get one for 6,000, what would that mean? You know, when and how much, and, do you have any leads?
Off the top of my head, no, I do not. I do not, but, you know. My, my question also is this money, don't you have some of this money earmarked in grant or something in, at the State House already to fix the hydrants?
Yes, I do.
All right, Alec?
Um, yes, I do, there being, the local earmarks were held up, I don't know when we're gonna have access to the money or if the governor's gonna cut them at this point, I was hoping to hear something before the election, now it looks like it's gonna be after. So unfortunately, I don't, I don't have any answers as when, when we're gonna see those funds, if we are, but we did get those earmarks. I also, I just heard that the Senate just voted they're gonna do a special session, now that the formal session is over, they wanna go back into formal session and look at the economic bond bill. I did put some earmarks in through Senator Durant's office in the economic bond bill, also for hydrants, hydrants and streetlights. But again, unfortunately, that, those aren't guaranteed, we're not guaranteed to get that, trying every avenue possible, but we do, again, like I said, we have that leak going on right now, we're losing gallons of water a day, so I'm just trying to mitigate any, any more disaster than me are currently experiencing.
Do you need all of the 12,000 to resolve this problem?
I'm thinking it's gonna be around 11, when all is said and done.
Now, also, there was talk about possibly finding out, was this damage during the construction? Was this caused during the construction of the improvement of the roadway?
So I did reach out to our fire chief and our highway superintendent, and they didn't know anything about that. They said it could have been, apparently, allegedly, the work was done over a year ago, I'm being told, and that it would be hard to hold them accountable for that, from what I've heard from the fire chief and the highway superintendent, but they don't know if, or have any idea if that was the cause.
I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
I know where the clerk of the works has his office, there was a clerk of the works, there was trouble. Our fire chief, before Josh, still has some problems with some elevations. There were, at that meeting, at the capital planning, and Bill was there, there was talk about serious damage to houses. So I think, not using any names, I think we need to discuss this before too much time goes by, because then it will be impossible to retrieve. But we're certainly within, you know, the timeframe where we can look at what happened.
Have residents come forward?
They haven't come to me, but it came up at the meeting, yes, there were, there have been people complaining, and...
I don't have anyone that's been coming to my office.
And you weren't at the meeting, so I can't, I can't remember who said that, but it came out of local. So I think, I'm just asking that we investigate it, we can find out when the pumping had to start, because that's all in, you know, time cards for the fire department that it is, I just don't wanna let it go away. It could be very expensive, I don't want to have to pay for it. For here, I would mo, I'd make a motion to use the ARPA funds toward the fire hydrants for now.
Second the motion.
Please.
Thank you.
Motion and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
William Tinker, aye.
Okay, I guess we can, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There was one other thing under ARPA, I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, I received an invoice from the town accountant for a tree service, it's also in your packet, it's $250. It came in and it was sent to the wrong accountant and the wrong fire chief, so we're adjusting it now. And I would also like to include this in the, in the money for, for ARPA.
Can we do that, being prior year?
Yep, I did check with the town accountant, and she said that was the, her recommendation.
I'll have to go to the meeting, okay.
Do we want to make another motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we pay the tree bill from Bound Tree with some of the ARPA funds.
I'll second the motion.
All those, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
William Tinker, aye.
Okay, discussion on conservation restriction with East Quavon Land Trust.
Madam, I have to leave, you're not allowed to be here.
Okay.
I'm also noticing that a discussion on payment in lieu of tax policy.
Yes.
Is not a vote tonight, so I still have a chance to discuss this.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, yep, okay, thank you.
Good night, then.
Okay.
Also, one is, is, has nothing to do with the other?
No.
The discussion of the payment policy or...
No, I think he's, I think he's reclusive himself from the East Quavon Land Trust discussion.
Right, right, but not...
And I'm gonna, I'm just gonna leave.
He'll be back for the pilot discussion.
Not tonight.
Oh, not tonight, oh, okay, you're leaving.
You just wanna make sure I don't miss the vote.
Oh, no, we're not holding you, yes, 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 yes. I, now I'm understanding, okay, sorry. I was a little confused there.
You can give a little ride home, Phil, please.
Have a good night, Eric.
Thank you, Bill.
I'm sure someone here was more than willing, if you were... Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, ma'am.
Where, where should we start?
Well, we kind of started it by approving, well, we approved this conservation restriction to recommend it to the select board that it be considered for acceptance and passed it on to you.
So, Conservation Commission.
I just wanna start with, I said to the board today, council's feedback, so the board has that, if you wanna start the conversation with council's...
Yep.
I have a copy of it if you want it.
I've got, yeah, no, I've got it, I've got it, so I think our big concerns walking out of the last meeting were what the liability to the town, what that means to the town, and you also mentioned that you had several others that were coming our way. At some point, we have to look at that liability to the town, because it definitely becomes a liability to the town the more and more of these that get accepted.
Well, I think if you review the language on the disclaimer of liability here.
I've reviewed it all.
Okay.
I've reviewed it all, um...
And so where does the concern come, because it specifically says the grantee does not undertake any liability or obligation related to the conditions of the premises.
So that is not the opinion of town council. Any, any accident that happened on it, any incident that happened on it, any harm to someone that happened on it, we would certainly be dragged into that, and they're also suggesting making sure that our insurance is aware, is aware of each and every one, every one of these properties. And we're looking, liability follows a policyholder wherever you go, like your liability covers you if you're in Zimbabwe and something happens, you know, your personal liability covers, I wanna make sure that there's not an extra cost for that, too. So I know Justine reached out.
And the, and the town council also understands that there's a Massachusetts recreational use statute that means that when you're not charging for people to be there, and so they're still concerned about liability?
Yes, and I mean, she even mentioned that, of course, as a, as a municipality, we would fall underneath that.
Yep, absolutely, and you're not, and a municipality isn't even the owner of the property, this is, this is just holding the development rights essentially on the property. So the town is very, very removed from any potential liabilities, the East Quavon Land Trust that has the liability, has the landowner.
I'm not, I'm gonna disagree with you, because I, I don't, at the end of the day, if something were to happen on a property that we have a conservation restriction on, and now the Conservation Commission is overseeing part of that, we're definitely involved, and we will be dragged in. So again, I'm all for open space, I, I get it. The problem is, our town has a lot of open space that is not on the tax roll now anymore.
But again, we're talking about just a conservation restriction, we're not talking about tax rule component at all. We're not talking about money.
I get it.
Here, okay?
But do you gain money putting the conservation restriction on it?
No.
You don't get any...
We don't get compensated for this, we're doing a, I mean, the whole point of the conservation restriction is for the public benefit, because there is benefit in having open space within the community, people wanna live in the community, all kinds of reasons. I know, I know they, they brought forth materials and, and shared it, you know, with select board members, so we can go through all those again, but no, this is not a, there's no money-making happening here, we're doing, we're a nonprofit organization. We were set up by people who were, who started from the Hardwick Open Space Committee in 1993. One of the key findings there was that because the town was not able to do its mission of protecting open space, that another organization needed to be set up, that's exactly why these founders, you know, set up the organization and we're continuing with that, because we know that keeping properties open is, is vital to the community.
Bill?
Well, there's still this problem, the town council believes that there is a, the town is gonna be responsible if there's an issue. So it's something that we need to clear up between town council and East Quavon Land Trust, who's, who's gonna hold the liability?
Well, yeah, hearing it now, it's a little hard to come prepared to address it, because I don't have the attorney with me.
I understand, I got this today, I got this information today.
Can we get a copy of both the Conservation Commission, and I'm sure the trust wants a copy, so we can read it?
Yes, because if we need to, because if we need to respond to that, because no other community has ever brought that particular issue before us. That's not true, that's... It is true, because if they haven't brought it before us, that's all I said, right, Justine, so let me be clear about what I... So let me be clear about what I'm saying is that I've never been, this has never been an issue with communities. Every community, every private conservation restriction, the community is asked and it's part of the state law that the select board or the mayor sign off on a conservation restriction. Because what you're agreeing to as a select board is that this meets public purpose, that there is a public reason for having open space. All of the values that come with keeping the woods and the farms going within our communities. So I've never had this before, so let me, I need, I need the information from you so that I can talk to our lawyer and figure out how to respond.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything in here that we can't pass on.
It is privileged communication.
It is. We can run it by, past Catherine first, that's fine.
Is this Catherine Klein?
Yeah. But I, I don't.
Well, we've certainly worked with her before in other conservation restrictions and it has not been an issue.
And people probably didn't ask the same questions. And again, we have to do and protect the town. That's our job is just to protect the town. Bill had some questions. They were good questions. He has every right to ask these questions and get answers for them so that he feels comfortable.
And did I not answer those questions?
Making decisions.
Forever.
It is forever, yes.
So we, we have to, what is our town gonna be in 150 years from now? We, none of us are gonna be here. So we need to protect the town's interest and also East Quavon Land Trust's interest.
Correct.
At the same time. So I'm sure there's some middle ground that we can come to.
And attorney Klein has worked with towns who have not, um, have voted down conservation restrictions. Um, so she's worked with both, um, ones that have supported it and ones that have not, so.
Let's have a conversation with her tomorrow if we can and see where we can move forward in sending over.
And also, I, I had some questions regarding this, this specific property. Um, there's, there was clauses in there for, for the green energy. And you mentioned you're never gonna put in solar, you're never gonna do farming. But it's a template. But why are these agreements in there if you're never gonna develop this land or use that land in that way?
Um, so Bill, I, I don't, I don't believe I said we never would. I believe what I said was that we have no plans to. So right now, the property is wooded and the intention would be to, is to add it to the patrolo preserve, which we manage, have, have, the woods are there and the trails and encourage people to come and to recreate on the property. Our vision at this point would continue that. If you think back to what this landscape looked like 150 years ago, 200 years ago, there weren't trees on the range right behind us. There weren't trees in lots of these properties that have stone walls that are evidence of agricultural use and other, other land uses in, that have happened in the past, are not happening now. And so one of the reasons to use the model language with the conservation restriction that allows for things that are compatible with the conservation values, so there, these are all compatible uses with conservation values is that you leave the opportunity for the future because it is in perpetuity, because we don't know exactly what's gonna happen, because maybe at some point, we do need to be growing more food. And so therefore, we do need to, instead of having it entirely be wooded, some portion of it needs to start growing food. We just don't know. And that's why when you use the model language, you have the flexibility of all of those very compatible conservation uses maintained into the future.
I understand that and I get that, but at the same time, when you redevelop land, it opens the door for pilot programs through chapter 121 redevelopment. So if you were gonna put in solar, the town would be interested in a pilot agreement if you're gonna get green energy money for that.
Well, I would suggest that that would be a discussion for the future, not for today and not, not specifically with this or any of the conservation restrictions that come forth. Um, again, you're, you're talking about taxes and not, and not in terms of the value of the conservation restriction itself.
This part I do not agree with because if you're gonna redevelop this land, whether it's 50 years from now, 100 years from now, and you don't know and you want these clauses in there and the town, the town will be on the outside looking in. There's nothing the town can do. So this is why I would like, you know, that we negotiate this or something where if you redevelop this land, that the town has the right to ask for a pilot.
Well, that is not standard language for this. And I think your definition of what you're thinking might happen for redevelopment for solar. It sounds like solar is the principal thing that you're, um, concerned with here.
Yep, yes.
And so that green ener, if you read that green energy paragraph, it's limited to using the energy on site. So it's, if you think about a farmland, which is where, where typically that would happen, where you're gonna be using, having lots of freezers or, um, you know, electrical equipment and you might want to offset some of the electrical use by generating some. Where this conservation restriction is not for commercial development. It is not for commercial solar. That's, that's clearly within the language. So the use, the use, if you think about it in terms of scale, it's more like what Imbier-Munson Farm does where they have, you know, two sets of 40 panels or Stillman's Farm where they are using a lot of energy within that setting, but they're, they're generating electricity for their use on their property. They're not selling it off-grid and making money.
Right, okay, but you're, you're still redeveloping the land or you would be adding this down the road. And then also, let's say you, you say this is where farmers do this and, and, um, use it for their own use, but at the same time, you said you're not gonna farm this land. You're not gonna do these things.
We do, we.
So either you are or you're not, like, what, what is the intent?
The intent is to keep this as open space. So to allow for all of those conservation, compatible conservation uses. This is really about restricting residential development more than whatever particular land use is happening in 150 years or 200 years from now. So this is, this conservation restriction is a document designed to limit where the houses and the septic systems go. So that when houses get built, they get built in other appropriate areas and not on a conservation, not a piece of land that's designated for conservation. I mean, I think you might, I don't know if you guys are willing to, to speak, but there's a couple, um, landowners here who are interested in having their lands conserved in this way. And maybe it would be helpful for them to share kind of why they want to see their properties conserved. I don't know if you're willing to share.
They have to address me.
Oh, sorry. If you.
Thank you.
If you may.
Um, I think we need to reach back out to town council. And I think Bill's right. I think we can try to find, um, a common ground.
I think so.
That suits both the town and East Quavon Land Trust. I think that's gonna be our first game of attack. And if it means the attorneys need to start talking together to come up with that, then that's what we'll do. Is that fair?
Okay.
Let's try to move this.
Yeah, it's totally fair.
Have the two attorneys, um, maybe go through Justine and, um, figure out what works for both of them. We just have to protect ourselves.
Yes.
We're under pilot pressure.
That's what we're, you know, we're the stewards of the town, right? So we just have to make sure that, you know, we're not getting involved into all this property that then something happens on it and then, you know, we're also pulled into that. Just have to be mindful of that.
That's reasonable. I mean, in defense of the conservation commission, we've worked, I mean, we, we have stated in numerous meetings that we have certain important conservation partners in town. DCR Quavon, the DFW with Wildlife Management Lands and the East Quavon Land Trust. We have seven of these restrictions that I know of so far. This would be the eighth. And in fact, the Ware River Park properties that we, the town, are improving, all for public access, fishing, whatever, you know, bike riding, walking. Those lands were actually the result of work by the trust to secure some grant money and we ended up with the Ware River parcels. And we're working in combination with them to develop the rail trail. Becky's put a lot of time in, um, and the Blue Way Trail on the river with another organization. You, you're aware of this stuff.
Yeah.
So in our defense, you know, we consider this an important conservation partnership. And so, um, we don't really, we think about the benefits that these lands provide. Even though people worry about taxes lost, the flip side is there are services provided in terms of outdoor recreation and educate wildlife education, environmental education.
Oh, like that and that.
All of those benefits that aren't really valued. We could probably do some research and come up with values if that's something that people worry about. But I, I see what you're saying. You're talking liability.
Right.
Understandable.
Right. That's the, the, you know, that's, that's really what it comes down to. That we just have to make sure that, you know, our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. Rick?
Just a quick question. So when you say the liability, you mean for injuries that occur, may occur in property or financial liability?
Anything. Well, and it.
Like a hundred twister.
If someone were to get hurt on it.
Yeah.
You know, our insurance could potentially be dragged into that and have to respond.
Fire, yeah.
Exactly.
The what? I'm sorry.
Fire.
Fire.
You know, anything. So we just have to make sure that, you know, we're being mindful of that and protecting the town the best that we can. That's, you know, that's our job.
Yeah.
And which protects you all, too, because, you know, at, at the end of the day, if the town has a gigantic lawsuit, it's gonna, we gotta pay for it somehow, you know? So. Bill? Are, are we good with, um, moving forward with both councils getting involved?
Yeah, absolutely.
To see if we can maybe just tighten the language up or, you know, something that makes everybody happy?
Right, and, and there's one other thing, the agritourism clause. I mean, you're a nonprofit. You said this. And you, and, and by having that clause in there, there are people in town that do have agritourism businesses. And you'd be taking from those businesses or competing with those businesses. And it, and it's almost like it's an unfair advantage.
What?
So, you know, this is, this is, you know, just further discussion, that's all. I mean, it's, I mean, we gotta protect the guy who's actually paying the taxes, paying for the land. How does he compete with somebody who doesn't have to pay the taxes?
That's different than liability.
Yeah, so this is a different issue. And I think if you look at, at our, our current practices, so the properties that we do have fields on, we're not out there cutting the, cutting the hay and selling the hay and competing with people. What we're doing is we're leasing and letting local farmers actually use it. So that is more likely the model of how if in the future, any kind of agritourism ever happen on the property.
Maybe it can be tweaked to be worded a little bit more.
So one of the things I think, I just want to be sure you're clear about is that we're using the model language. And so we're using the pre-approved language that's already gone through all of the attorneys for approval. So going back before the end of the year and tweaking language now is something that would be very difficult to do.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna question that.
Yeah.
If, if we're gonna try to get to a happy place where everybody wants to sign it, I think we need to, you know, take a look at that.
About which paragraphs specifically? Are you talking about the ones that Bill is suggesting or are you talking about the liability?
Well, and the liability.
Sorry, I need to.
Just, go ahead.
Um, so you mentioned leasing to farmers. Who, um, who gets the revenue for that?
Well, we get the revenue for that. Those are, those are for properties and that's all reported on our, but it's 25 or $50 an acre for, you know, five to eight acres. It's not a big revenue generating on the properties that we already have. But it is a different model than what Bill was suggesting. We are not trying to compete. We're not out there competing with farmers.
No, it just, I think the wording opens the door for it. That's what he's saying.
Yes.
The wording opens the door for it. That's all he's saying is that it, it could be construed that way. So let's have the attorneys have a conversation and see if we can come up with something that everybody is comfortable with. We good with that, Bill?
That's good, yep.
All right. So I would continue to have this on our agenda until we figure this out.
Yep.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Thank you.
The next thing is payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot policy?
Yes. Um, we, we didn't get a response from town council basically saying they can't advise us on the policy. Or via email. I'm not sure if you were able to see that email.
Yeah, yeah.
And then he proceeded to say, once that's all aside, here you should make these changes. But I don't understand why town council can't advise us on a policy. And I, I sent an email and I didn't get a response to it.
Okay. Well, I guess maybe we follow up on the email that you sent. Um, maybe Justine can do that and just kind of poke the bear a little bit there. I didn't get that from, I didn't get that they, uh, I guess.
It's the very first sentence. They said, we can't advise you on the policy, basically.
Well, implementing, because that's a board decision. That's a town decision.
Right, but if the policy itself, is the policy okay? Like, there's certain terms in there. Is that okay? Is that not okay? I mean, what I got from it is he couldn't advise us.
So I took it that, um, I took it very differently, Bill. I took it that, um, they're not gonna tell us whether or not to implement one or not. That's, that's a town policy decision. And then I also took that, what you sent over, that there were only a couple of things that they had comments on. Um, because at the end, you know, he agreed to, you know, assist in drafting them.
An agreement with an actual agreement.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
So I don't, yeah, I don't think that they don't wanna, um, help. But I mean, we can certainly see what their, their follow-up is. You said you sent some questions, so do you wanna see what the follow-up comes of that and maybe even?
Yeah. And meanwhile, um, I'll, I'll update the draft and I'll, I'll send it along to you.
Okay.
And, or I'll send it to Justine and she'll send it to you and send it to Eric.
Yeah, okay.
And, and then that way, you know, and I'll, and I'll do that later this week, okay? Hopefully, or, or this coming weekend, okay? I'll, and I'll send it out by next Monday.
Okay.
And, and then that way you can redo it, you can see it, um, and, and, you know, you put your input to it, Eric has his input. And then maybe we can finalize something where we can get closer to maybe adopting something.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's a good idea. And in the meantime, um, hope, you know, even if it means maybe you and Justine have a conversation with town council, um, to, to just get some clarification. You know, if you have specific questions, I don't think that they're not willing. I didn't get that from this.
I had some issues with it, only like their, his response, only because like he sent a lot of excerpts from Massachusetts law and like we can read those ourselves. Like, when we go to council, we want counsel.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah.
I mean, I think.
And I have copied on Bill's, uh, okay.
Okay, perfect. So, um, let's see what the response we get from that is. And, um, I think, I think we just keep moving forward. I think it's a good idea, you know? And then, you know, obviously they depart in helping us do these anyway. So, you know, we, we need them. We need them to back us up.
And also, Kelly, meanwhile, I, um, I sense a thing, I talked with Justine as far as, you know, what, what information would we need from different town services like the police, the fire, you know, on those? Where they're going, where, where is a lot of this services being applied to? And, and yes, I mean, the town has never sent out a bill for these services or thing. But we just, it will bring it to the forefront where you can realize how much money is actually being utilized.
Well, and they, you know, their input on these, this might not be a bad idea either. Those don't, you know, the bigger departments that, you know, the, the public safety departments. It may be a good idea to get their input regardless.
Right, absolutely.
I, yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's it. We'll stabilize it for the next meeting.
Yep, okay.
But meanwhile, by, by Monday, by, by a week from today, we'll have, you know, have a, a much better draft put together. a much better draft, particularly.
Okay, that's good, yeah, perfect, because then I think our next meeting will be the 12th because of Veterans Day, right?
Yes, correct.
All right, perfect. Okay, Becky?
This is actually a question from Bill.
Yep.
Bill met, Bill Tinker met with Bill Zinni and me regarding conservation last week, just to kind of tell them what we were doing with Conservation Commission, and his concern about nonprofits in town. And he said that he would thought it would be a good idea to have a conversation with the nonprofits, rather than, I don't know, you know, where you are in this...
Oh, absolutely, this is...
I mean, not to dictate to say you need to pay this, I mean, is that clear, is that what we were talking about, Bill?
Yes, and also to have conservation there, because Bill Zinni and Becky both, both mentioned how, you know, how, what they do and how conservation restrictions help the town and benefit the town.
Yeah.
And how East Quavon Land Trust is a facilitator for the town, and to help certain things happen quickly, per se, versus the state that moves very slow, possibly, is a nice way of putting it. And so, there is, there is great benefit to conservation, and, and they explained it tremendously to me, and I get it, but meanwhile, at the same time, I explain to them, there, we, we do, we do need pilots from these nonprofits to contribute to the town, we all need to contribute. It shouldn't just fall all on the taxpayer.
But to follow up on that, that for certain organizations, it would be different, depending on their impact of these services.
Absolutely.
Because some use a lot of police and fire versus open space, which there's practically no demand for fire and police. So, I mean, there has to be some recognition.
There, there, this isn't gonna be, you know, this is a pilot and everybody owes, you know, 50 grand, that's not, no.
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure that's what, you know, we're talking about as a conversation.
I mean, one of the first paragraphs is how it's a voluntary agreement with the town, it's to hope that we can partner with any organization and come to an agreement to just, you know, help the town.
Oh, I agree, I think that's what it should be, it should be a collaboration, an agreement between organizations, rather than the town saying, you have paid this.
No, because it's not our intention at all.
That's what I'm just wanting to make sure to bring out.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
And also, Becky, it's, there's, there's language in this where if, if the nonprofit does services to the citizens, like provide, you know, like how you provide open free space, and, and we have to quantify that somehow, but we reduce whatever we're looking for out of a pilot agreement, we reduce those services down that, that you provide to the citizens of Hardwick free. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, there's a lot of activities that go on in these spaces that are free and open to the public, and it's a great service to, educationally, to children and adults.
You know, there's, there's certainly gonna be very different conversations between very different organizations, yeah, good.
Right, everyone's gonna be different, unique of their own situation, and it's, and it is voluntary thing.
Okay, good.
Voluntary.
Yeah. So, Town Administrator Report?
Yes. So, I've been working with the Executive Assistant and the Police Lieutenant, we're still gathering information on all of our billing for phone quotes, so we're just getting those in, so we can hopefully, in the foreseeable future, pull the trigger on a vendor and get our new phones. Yeah, thank you. So, if you've driven through the Center of Hardwick, the old barn roof is getting repaired as we speak. I drove by today and there was no roof, so we're making progress. Last week, the Executive Assistant and myself attended a Vadar training, we have Part Two this week, just doing, you know, sewer billing and stuff and getting up to speed on that, that process, so that will be coming. I had a call with Congresswoman McGovern's office on our financial challenges, just trying to stay on their radar, and we have our bi-weekly financial management team meetings every other week, with the Assessor, Treasurer, Collector, and the Town Accountant, so, you know, we're all on the same page. So last Friday, I moderated a panel with Attorney Sean O'Connor at the Massachusetts Municipal Human Resource Association Labor Relations Seminar in Devens, and it went really well. As you know, we hired a, or, the board just approved to hire a new Assistant Chief Operator in the Waste Water Treatment Department.
Scott must be so happy.
Yes, he is very happy. Unfortunately, we lost one of our new highway employees, he didn't die, he's just no longer with us. So we are, sorry, I just said that really weird and I caught myself. So we are starting interviewing again on Wednesday. We are looking at employee salaries for FY '25 and FY '26, the Assessor has been really helping me with this project, because she is on the Personnel Committee, so we're looking at employees, what they're getting paid this year, what market adjustments, what that would be like, and what we're gonna do for next year, and once I have more information, I'll go to the Personnel Committee and then to the Select Board. I attended a Quavon Health District meeting with the Board of Health Chair and the Board of Health Clerk, that was really interesting, it's a lot more organized, it's, it's a lot more formal, it's, it's a very eclectic group of people on the board, but it was an impressive meeting, and I think we all enjoyed ourselves just observing, we were just there to observe. We have been working on liquor license renewals, Class II and Class III licenses, we updated the packet, we've been cleaning up the process of putting a more formalized process in place when it comes to that, so it'll be easier year after year, updating all of our forms with the Mass General Law, so that's been very time-consuming, but those licenses are going out for renewal on Wednesday.
Good.
I wanna thank everyone who worked really hard to prepare for the special town meeting, the Assessor, Executive Assistant, Town Accountant, Treasurer Collector, and Town Clerk. Important dates, tomorrow morning from 9:00 to 10:00 at Mimi's is coffee with the Town Administrator, so don't make me sit there alone, come say hi. And the state election is November 5th, so that's all I have this week.
All right, great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything under Select Board Roundtable, Bill?
Yes, I, I have a thing for, see if we could get a letter of appreciation to Jacob Stupel, for, you know, over 20 years of community service, him and his wife Susan, they helped the recycling center, he's done numerous jobs around town repairing stuff for the town at little or no cost, that's all. And he, he just recently sold his place, he's, he's moving to O-Cam.
Yep.
And so if we...
He'll be missed.
He, he will be missed, so...
I'm all in favor of that.
And I'd also like to thank Peter Durant, Senator Peter Durant, for sponsoring me for tomorrow's seminar at the State House, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Nice.
So, that's it.
I can put something together.
Yeah, that'd be great, for Jacob.
Yep.
Add the food pantry, and there were volunteers for years.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't have anything, I'm good.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor?
William Tinker, aye.
They still have fun the next couple of days, learn lots.
They will, they hope to learn quite a bit.
All right, good, thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
It's harder than you thought.